All right, uh, say some color, we'll call it in order, like the order of business is five to the five. We went through the minutes of May twenty first. It's up to the motion on second and discussion. I see none, all those in favor? To everybody? Uh, members reports, we'll start with Lindsay. Or go, Chuckie? Thank you. And not good for me, so we'll die, alright, there can be.
Uh, the gazebo work is a moving wave, uh, teardown ended up happening last Thursday. And they did get work yesterday, there we had a little bit of interference. Uh, from folks coming down from the high school, they called. They were not happy that the gazebo was there, and told we were gonna have construction. And asked them if they could find another place just for this year, um. They came anyway, so it. Pretty much shut these people down yesterday, and today they got a little bit done, but, um, so far so good. Um, tentative plan for that is, uh, ribbon cutting on the first music night being July first, if everything stays the course. Uh, the late breaking this afternoon about an hour ago, uh, Somerset County approved fifteen dollars dollars to put towards this project, so. Um, we will put that towards the bay project. Um, and then we've got the elec- the electricity that wasn't a part of that. Um, and then that opens the door for some sound equipment possibly. Um, and and maybe that happens this year, maybe it happens next, but, um, that's a good opportunity there to to make sure that that project gets done and done well. Uh, cemetery stone repair, remember last year we had, uh, the guy from Upstate New York come in for the week. Uh, he is back again, started this morning on up Bourbon Street, so they're looking to hopefully work, uh, right through till next Wednesday. Um, we had field day for school this last week, this last Friday, uh, fire department was there. Uh, Amy and I went as well, uh, it was a great event for the kids and I, you just don't see things like that around. They had food trucks and everything, and it was all free to the kid, so pretty cool thing, and they had over seventy volunteers. Superintendent said, uh, every for every three volunteers in the school list for two of whom are from Mel street. So that just kind of goes to. The what happens over here, um, and that's a pretty great thing. I had two people come to me and say, is there a way we can recognize PTG? So keep that in mind when we get. Another eight and up, eight months down the line, when we talk about Spirit of America or things like that, let's wanna do something different, uh. Yesterday we go for the third grade classes, so three groups of them came through. That's the annual trip through the air goodie bag and then worry about both the government. Uh, county tournaments, we are the beneficiary of, uh, Scout Higgins, um, blundering, I'll say. Uh, and that is that they don't have fields that are ready to use for the upcoming tournament, so. They initially asked us to hold the state eleven U tournament from June twenty seventh till July second or third, depending upon the schedule. That changed today to add on a second tournament, it's a nine U district tournament, so it's smaller. Uh, and that'll be the nineteenth through the twenty first. It appears as though we're gonna be able to make it happen, it should generate some revenue for us. Should generate revenue for some local businesses, we're just trying to pull together the terms of that, but, uh, that's a good opportunity there. Onto more event planning here, uh. New equipment ribbon cutting, we've got that on the books, that is the ADA accessible equipment, um, or inclusive playground equipment in Usula Park. Um, that is. Installed and whatnot, we said we had great timing. And the parks committee and I decided that let's tie it into lead into Usula Days weekend, so that's on the books for August thirtieth. Uh, and we're gonna make a day, well, I say a day of it, it's gonna be eleven to two, but we want people to come and stay for a little bit, so. Cut a ribbon, live music, food truck, bounce house, and some other things, we're gonna pull together to support that. Uh, your Usula Days planning. The solicitation letters went out already, I bet I'm fifty percent booked up just in. Three days this week of of businesses calling to say we wanna sign up for this or that. Uh, so that's good, that's shaping up to be, uh, the same or better event. We're also rolling out a fall festival, that will be held in October. Uh, that's one of those plus up events that the parks committee was talking about, so Scout Higgins Stadium is made, so maybe the premier sponsor of that event. That will have pumpkin painting, they've made a cash donation, they're also gonna donate pumpkins. We'll have live music, food truck, bounce house, photo, uh, photos of contractors, um, and more, there's a lot in the air, possibly a chili chili cook off. Or whatnot, so, um, figure that one out and we will get information out, and that comes a little closer. Uh, pump station generator, that's a project that kind of fell off the list, we knew we wanted to do it, it's maybe the engineer, so okay, engineer, what's going on? Um, and pretty much. We're waiting on our engineers, the electrical engineers to design this plant for USDA. Being compliant with everything, and that's just a long lead time on it, so as soon as we hear about that, we'll be able to bid that out and then consider whether or not. There'll be grand residual to, uh, surface the drive, we'll go to the plant. Cemetery and grass concerns, that's a very small picture, but I think you get the. Ideas totaled faced with, it's looks like trash. Um, that's in Sunset View Cemetery, I own group two. Um, long and short of it was, we can leave it and wait till next year, hope that it comes back. Uh, you can aerate and overseed it, so it's gonna be extra cost that we didn't necessarily plan for, we have a reserve. Um, so we're gonna get surprises on how we can move ahead with it. So that we're able to at least respond to the written concern that we've received about it. Um, and maybe trial something, oh, this obviously isn't the only cemetery, and this cemetery is covered like this.
Isn't it them grubs worms?
Oh, scrubs, yeah.
Something like this, yeah.
Standing ground.
So are you coming, like this after dinner, or how, what are you, you're just getting a book, how are we doing that?
Uh, well, right now I asked John, said he was gonna go and take a look. To see what he was going to, um, suggest, because he said it's very similar to what we do on the ball. One of the stages that we do on the ball field, and he wanted to go out and get a close look at it. Because it might be something that sports fields, but then they're coming into the.
Yeah, no, I, it's kind of happening everywhere, that's, I was curious not working it in a lot of them.
It's gross, but, so that's there preliminary, that's kind of been a week in the making, and, uh, everybody's busy and a lot lots of like jobs. So airport opportunity, we've talked, and we'll talk a little bit later about it, but. The owner of Shredway Main, uh, which is a carting facility.
Oh, who?
Carting.
Oh, like cart, like?
Yep.
Okay, I like carting, that's like.
Uh, down in Parsons Field, they have been looking to cite this New England carting challenge. Uh, they are looking to Central Main, they had everything in place at Waterville, and then so comes bureaucracy, um. And that fell through, so they were looking to try to scramble something together for, um, this year, it's not gonna happen. Uh, he came up this morning and met with me, and it sounds really cool. So, uh, what ultimately are we required to be? The easiest and the safest is to shut the airport down. They're willing to pay us five thousand dollars to shut the airport down from Friday evening till Sunday, uh, Saturday night. So about thirty hours, they pay us five thousand dollars, um.
No money than the airport's made in two years, don't think.
So, this is not gone to the airport advisory, they're gonna have a lot of questions, they're working on kind of guidelines and minimums for this, but. It is, these people that cart spend a lot of money on their hobby. Um, they, it's nothing for somebody that have a hundred thousand dollar cart. And they come with trailers attached to RVs and things like that, these people are bringing all their own staff, support staff. Public safety, they all be responsible for that, insurance, um, and so anyway. It sounds like a very good opportunity, Jim's gonna zoom in hopefully at the next meeting with the airport to talk to them about it. Um, and and I'd like to be able to have something. In the next month for you guys to look at and say, yeah, we wanna try it, or no, we don't. There is an opportunity for us to tie our compensation to gain fees. But I thought for the first time around, it was good to have a guaranteed number.
Yeah, I would say.
And to be where we wanna be, and then after the fact, we can review the finances of their event, and they've been open to that, so. It's really kind of. Cool to think about that coming, it's, he says it's not a huge attraction, but I think it will be.
I think, yeah.
And they're talking about their own.
I'm.
Like positive revenues, pretty important, because whether there's ten people shut up.
But they're, they would have other attractions, so they're talking about bounce houses and things like that.
And they carry no liability?
Right.
Okay, so I mean.
Uh, and then they, so the concern is about spectator parking, and I suppose we can have used airport road, they're talking about shuttle people. And providing shuttle services for people so that they can leave there, come to downtown large block, park at the school. They'll take a discovery to Waterville or things like that, all to build this in there up, so. If it works and it moves through, then they would run out in summer of twenty six to roll this out, and then it would be a recurring thing, it's a local, they won't.
How many people they talking?
I don't necessarily know. I told him I wanted twenty five or thirty free tickets for people in local boards committees that want to know more about this.
But there's, there's quite an area right between the taxiway and the main runway, there's. Like seventeen acres right there that they really don't cut hay and nothing on, right, it would would back a lot of cat.
The, and the way that they're gonna have, the proposing having the horse set up would not allow that.
Okay.
And once the people that are participating in it, were there, they are there to stay because of the way that it's. Um, but you know, then there would also be potentially the ability for you to walk around a cart, participate in that way. And then he's talking about businesses in the area would actually give money to a charity of their choice. Show them the money to the charity where they're trust, and they would go in and they would race, but race, race.
I'm assuming we must have to have.
To know.
Fire department there for that, do we have the factor, that type of stuff, and I know that they carry no liability, but for us, I mean, you've got.
They have to have law enforcement.
If I'm allowed to go take out cart and just go, we're hell with it, like I, I assume fires, should we, can't we?
The intent, i- i- that's not the primary, the primary is the mess.
Okay.
So if the fire department wanted to go, I don't think they'd be opposed to it.
There's no problem with the FFA shutting that down for a while.
No. Cool, so anyway, that is like some exciting news for today, and we'll talk about that more hopefully in July, um.
Would there be winter opportunities for something similar to that with like maybe a snowmobile or something like that?
Uh.
No snowing.
I'll say category, no, and I don't think, you you would take this more to overriding the airport advisory. Because of the oils and fluids that snowmobiles will burn. Well, okay. I will, I will love that.
No.
Also, you'd have to shut.
Don't airplanes leak fluids and oils and?
I, I don't know, that's not on my agenda, I'm not counting it, so. But that, what they had called me about, there would be a no winter thing for snowmobiles.
Of the bill, of course, I think it's gonna take, you know, just a one day shut, to bring the summer memories, cause they'll just do all of those. It's no corpse.
Our targets are, I'm excited, right, and that's.
I'm excited to see the airport make any.
Yeah, it's a benefit, because we've got the standard stuff here, and then. County office will be closed next Tuesday, A, we're doing an intimate upgrade, but B, we'll leave the schools for the election, that's your school around our room. Uh, honestly, we probably have fifty voters if we're lucky. Um, and then your boards and committees are listed, then the sewer commission is scheduled to meet Tuesday the seventeenth for, um, an abatement request. And then a slight modification from staff on the ordinance about, uh, material used to prevent, so. Um, that'll be back to you, no rush, because that won't be until March, so we'll take the risk.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving forward, uh, number six here, special action on June fourth, general warrant number eleven.
I will move to your general warrant number eleven and the amount of sixty two thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty thousands.
So. Uh, motion on second, do you discuss?
Uh, what we have engineered. Okay, like what do we, feel like there's always some sort of.
Bailey, the one that's managing all of those projects, I'd say they're also managing the housing development. Money that came from congressional, that coming out of millions, they do all my grant, it's just very.
Okay, and then with, uh, McKenna carpet, and that's the, was he sorry?
That's one third payment?
Yep, okay.
We didn't arrange that, we hadn't talked about that, it's not on the contract, but you got the materials to break, that's why I don't write it today.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Richard?
Okay.
Richard. So, we're trying to make sure that.
Oh, fancy stuff going on there. Is, and TDS is, is that all of our buildings on that one TDS?
Yes.
It's broke down on the class, we get this.
Not much screens it.
Now they just. Internet or they internet amp all?
Their internet phone everywhere except for the fire department and the fire department inspector.
And. Uh, any further discussion? See none, all those in favor, to everybody? Oh, comment? Mike?
I'm gonna get some issue coming up with the tip. And I, I, my issue with the tip and out of the name or whatever is that. I feel like. In a knock, I admit no disrespect.
Why are we?
Yeah, to both you, but you both, Lindsay, you had a lot of comment on it, you have as well, Matt, you both. Have received money from the tip for your businesses. You're white, you have.
Significant others.
Yes, either way, and I feel like that, that is kind of a conflict for you guys to be able to judge another business.
I wasn't on the board and voting on that.
I, I, I understand, but as far as now, no, I, no, that's not, no, 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 I mean, but going forward. Your opinions as to what businesses. Should have it and shouldn't, seems like a little problem, if you've already taken, your, your, your businesses have taken some money. So I just, it seems like a common theory to me, that you could say, well, I don't want this business on Main Street because I don't like this business. And I understand we gotta have. But you, you said you don't want it, you don't wanna use car dealership.
Because that's part of the tip, already laid out.
You don't. You, you stretch that tip out so bad now, and I think that that's a problem, and I think that going forward. I think it would be. Well advised, maybe look into taking that tip money. And put it into a fund where maybe you did something where the elderly people of this town. That can't afford their property taxes and their sewer bills, and you could put it in there and they could apply, but instead of going to a business. You, I think it would do more good. For the greater good of the townspeople, if you could spread that money to individuals who are struggling. To make their. We've talked, we talked about this, those sewer committee, that. These increases that we're talking about just for sewer and water. That puts a big bind on, and Jeff was saying earlier, he wanted to know with the, how much money was gonna come up for. Increase in taxes just for the new school, so there are people on fixed income. That I think that we could do more with that money, because I believe, I just see it as getting out of control as far as. Where it's going, who it's going to, and why, so why couldn't we just kind of? Reconfigure that and have benefit more people?
Uh, in one sense, you, you could, uh, but I feel, and I, I think the, the entire, the entire board has been, uh. That this is an investment, so there's kind of a return, so when we invest in that business with the money, the idea is the business grows and everyone benefits. Whether it's job creation or opportunities in the community to dine or get the things you need. So it, it's really an investment versus a handoff. I, and I don't mean to coin it like that, I, I might take a step to step that you see.
I, I do, but I think.
Like that doesn't stimulate the, I think it's meant to stimulate the economy, stimulate the growth of the business. That we have.
I believe that it's gotten, I, I think it's, it's, it's got not hand now, and I think it's.
I think that's where that subjectivity was, where we've been trying to make them make clear reliance, or like what they're.
I, I'm just trying to find a more. Overall, instead of just the businesses. Well, I bet it's useful, I guess, as far as, you know, cause we are always talking about. You know, if you take like, these committees are always trying to keep making affordable so that people are.
Yes.
Course pack.
Yes.
And I think that that would maybe help down the line and get rid of some of this. I don't have a great word.
Right, and it, and it, it's not that we pick and choose, right, there's a set of requirements that are set forward, you either set criteria or you don't. Um, and and I, I don't know if anybody hasn't yet, um, but for the most part. I don't think wanting individual, myself, or Lindsay, or or even any of us have the ability to tank a, a project.
I didn't, I didn't.
It would be very obvious if you had a personal grudge with.
I didn't say that you had, I just, that, I didn't say that you entangled project, I just. If you've already received funds from the tip committee, and now you're saying now, I don't really like how that business, I don't like that business doing that, I'm not for that business. Well, somebody might have that feeling about.
Potentially, that would question the integrity of the person.
Right, is that what you're trying to?
No, it's not, it's not your integrity, I'm just.
I didn't hear what you said, I, I don't understand.
Saying that, you know, it just looks to me on the outside, not, I'm, I have no way to, to get any of this tip money, it just looks to me from the outside that. It, it, it raises a, just a question as to. How we're doing it, I guess.
All right, well, that's been, that's been questioned.
Yeah, I think that's why there's tip committee, it doesn't come directly to us, we.
One, one issue is Eric sell juice cup, I don't care, but you say you don't want no used cars, wouldn't want a used car dealer. In the revamping of things, I don't know if that got into stone.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, I can speak for myself and say, no, I definitely don't want a used car dealership now.
In the downtown, yeah.
Hey, if Eric wants to sell cars, have at it, please don't.
Five years ago, we had two, we had right where, right where, we had, we had ten investors, and we had. Dicky Dan, which was, was always there, it was right part of the same Main Street corridor that we have now, and they were fully part of what we did.
And I, and I can only speak for myself, I will let my personal views impact how I vote on this board. So whether I like pavement or I like used cars really isn't relevant, for me, it's about what's best for this entire community. And I can only speak for myself, and if you question my integrity, well then, you, you get, say, hey, Tim, you're kind of being shady here, so I get that, so far.
No, I'm just, I, I'm just.
Whatever does, the community should point it out, I, I mean, it's all recorded, we're all.
I didn't say you guys, I just, just, I just, maybe we need to change the way we.
Look at it, it, it's, it's been discussed amongst this board already.
Yeah.
And the tip committee themselves, and we're constantly going back and revising how we're doing it, because I don't. I don't know if we're blazing this trail, I know there's other tips that have, that have been before us, but it's the first one for us, the community. So we are kind of stumbling our way through this, but we're, I think so far doing a pretty good job.
Asking a great question.
Yeah, it is, it's.
I think we're, and we added to.
We have a pretty good tip committee below us that does a good job of asking those questions, getting the information, and is passing it to us. So I'm not saying we're a rock stamp, but I, I don't know if we've shied away from the tip committee's recommendation yet.
I don't think we ever shied away from it, I think we've only like asked them to take a look at one again, that they were like, no. We've encouraged more growth, we've not said no.
It's hard to choose who gets money and who doesn't, and what's valid and what isn't, without. Some type of personal preference.
Yeah, and I think that the preference is what we are looking to develop that downtime into, so I think that the plans that have been put forward, what. We want ten years from now to look like, like twenty five years ago, things could have been great here, but is that the look that we want in the field that we want in the business? Cause at the end of the day, with businesses leaving, we need to generate more tax revenue coming in, that means that the money we invest there needs to have more potential for bringing in. Tax dollars so that our mill rate does stay low, we have to replace those businesses for a while, and so that's where that tip money. Can come in, like what can we invest so that something comes back, and, you know, and I, I do want to address that. Regardless of, you know, someone's spouse having a business or not, I know that Matt's been very upfront about it, I have never did anything. But we refuse ourselves, so, uh, like a spouse approving something, doing something like, we stepped out, outside of that, so. Because I have a company that had once received something, I don't think that negates my ability to. Look at something and objectively.
And, no, I didn't say, no, I, I just rose it, it, I'm from an opinion standpoint.
It, it does play a bad, sure, we're gonna kick this.
I know, twenty minutes, I got it.
Appreciate what you do, uh.
You should join.
Anybody else there, he was long, it is two minutes.
So recently we amended, did we amend the tip? Policy?
Yes.
Yes.
What, what were the major, what were the major points, I haven't seen them.
A lot of it was the reduction in the actual amount, it became a lower amount because they wanted to give more businesses the opportunity, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, this was a couple weeks ago, but it was. You know, before it was up to a fifty percent match, up to, I think it was twenty five thousand was the maximum. Now it's half of that, so it's twenty twelve five would be the maximum amount. Um, and their thought with that was to, you know, spread the money around more, um, freely, and it was also trying to clear up, I think, a lot of the confusion. And I think we all were kind of like, oh, okay, with the, you know, facade improvement for that apartment building. Was that a business, was residential, was it, what was the impact, and, you know, I think it was trying to. Clarify some of those things where we did have to make a pretty subjective like opinion, because there weren't any clear parameters. It wasn't black and white, and that's where we did have to say, all right, what benefits does this bring to the downtown, it's not necessarily a business fund, but like the downtown becomes better, so. I think that if we can remove as many of those gray areas, and I think that's basically what it has done.
Yeah.
And it was something to do with the percentages too, wasn't it, it was. I know twelve five, that's what changed the max, but it was something.
Percentage.
Right, right. Okay, so, right, that's right.
It used to be a provision, I thought that, you know, if, if there was a portion of residential. Like we had some businesses maybe with an apartment above that weren't eligible for that, didn't that change?
I don't know, it's even come up, was it?
There is something in there on the new one, if it has X number units, but there is business space, retail space with it.
Yes, okay, yep.
And it does fit, so it did change a little bit.
Or it's gonna be above.
Five.
Five, gonna be five or more units.
Do you think the, the actual like?
So now I'm building still.
Physical space, did, cause I know that, I know that we had had a conversation about, are we maintaining it like basically Usula to the school? Did they change anything with that, I know that was kind of like about where the business district lies, okay.
So the last project to prove was what, what was the last major project that was improved? Uh, Bigford Properties, which was the Empire Building.
Yeah.
Which was the resident, that was a property. It is under her guidelines, it's more than a high unit or.
Or a school.
Okay.
So, they, they were the test case as to where.
Which, they were pretty split, or.
Yeah, yeah, I see, that's really.
And the only issue, issue that it had in the past, great, you know, if we wanna change these things and make them more appropriate for the town. But follow the guidelines that you're setting.
Yeah.
Dude, that's, that's.
Um, and I think for the most part, we have, uh. So it's been modifications.
Some stuff, yeah.
We asked for that.
Yes, sir.
Yep, that was a great line to make.
Which is fine.
Yeah, so they, they issued a moratorium on application, we could not accept them. Until we approved guidelines.
Yeah.
The other one was, uh, crooked face, that was approved in the same cycle, where they, uh, approved up to twenty three or twenty four thousand for that project.
And that's an artock project.
They're gonna be up on across the robot.
I just think they better take jobs, better.
Oh, is it, okay, the other cheese tasting, perfect.
Thank you, Chuck.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm supposed to say this, but I thought last night tip me, that the tip committee was awful inconsistent. Where they approved one and made the other one, they didn't, but that's just my opinion, the, that, they're trying to improve, not new construction, and. I was kind of taken back.
On which origin?
The way they said this stuff wasn't all there, and.
Uh. Well, then I just, right. Uh, what's it called?
Mint.
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 But, uh.
And and would, by understanding, was basically an incomplete application.
But I don't know what's the incomplete about it.
I, I, I didn't, I didn't actually see it, I, I'm not sure. From public comment, oh, yeah, okay, I guess we're gonna, we're, we're gonna get to that in just a minute. Uh, anything else, Chuck, anything else for public?
Oh, oh.
Nothing, okay. Uh, we're to, here, uh, number eight, then discussion, passing on to committee recommendations.
There you go, so. Chuckie was honestly, boy, with the conversation, we flipped. Uh, you're looking ahead, Matt, last night, uh, I'll take the bottom one off first, and that is. The committee did not proceed so far with consideration for the residential incentive program. With, uh, facade incentive program that kind of kicked around here, I think it was cold temperature, maybe. Uh, and then the chair that was developing guidelines, did not have the opportunity to develop that, and so there's no movement from that, but that was on my stage agenda. The first, uh, facade improvement application that was received in this cycle was Ben's Studio, that's seventieth on Main Street. Also known as, uh, let's see, the old movie store, that new real estate office, um. That they had a one page. Uh, itemized bulletin here throughout this cost here, uh, the roof project, the window project, the chimney project, the, uh. Blackboard, it was very, very signage, it was just single line, here's the price, here's the line, here's the price. Uh, the TIF committee wanted estimates, written estimates for that work, um, and they also wanted to see what the sign looked like. And I think, not to defend them, but maybe to give some perspective, is that everybody's feeling a bit French on the budget on the tip. And they're exceeding the guideline of previous year's receipts, but understand that there's some competitive applications and. Areas that they wanna see improve. Uh, but they're starting to ask more questions, and I think, I mean, maybe they should have been asking more questions all the time.
Well, I think the same thing with the board too, you have change in board members too, and I think that sometimes the temperature changes a little bit and.
Their, their position hasn't changed much.
Really?
You know, they're pretty consistent, anyway, uh, so they did put a motion on the floor to approve the application as presented, but it failed for the lack of a second. Then they moved to table it, so I've communicated with the applicants and asked them to provide enhancement for me. And then they, we will be, let's, they're actually gonna be at the end of this month.
Has anybody ever been turned down before?
Yeah, uh, yes.
And part of those things have been not approved.
No harm, I don't know if we had a whole application that was turned down, but there was a proposed paving project and mixed use property.
Yes, so.
And it caused, um, a lot of issues, because where they wanted to pave, where it was gonna be your residential, where it was gonna be the business. And the, the lines were blurred, um. But I don't think it was ever formal with what they got. No introduction, everything's been modified, right, right. So here's.
Maybe make any motion on that one, Joe, except for what?
We're fine with them, hey, maybe there's no action.
Could we, could we bring that up for a vote, even?
We, we could, we could, we could, I. I do have to say, after seeing quite a few of these, uh, it's, it's vague, it's vague, uh. And and really, it's not a denial, right, it's just asking for some clarification, or it's, it's.
Uh, the pictures that you have in there?
Well, okay, that's what I was thinking, so, really? And I don't wanna say they're gonna get their money. I don't want to say they're gonna get their money, they just need to revise this, make the corrections on there. And get it in, and and they'll get, I I think everybody supports, probably the whole audience supports the project, uh, as well as the. Dollars to it, it just, there's boxes that need to be checked. The criteria, you can need to have it.
I had.
But I don't, not anybody would, I don't want anybody pocketing this money. Or making out that they should.
So the motion probably when you get seconded.
Uh, I can say that it would. But I I do support what they, I I do stand. And I'm just taking.
Yeah, I mean, that what was, I thought that was, this was really bothering all the buildings in China.
One, one, they meet everything, they just need to meet the requirements of the application. It's it's strictly clerical, I I really, I don't think anybody doesn't support what they're doing. You just need to get it filled out, and there's a record, and Richard, uh, Richard will check the receipts that are submitted afterwards by what was given to make sure that they meet the dollar requirements for the funds they give them. I can mount, you've checked and bounces, that would have been much shorter to say.
Still not real satisfied.
No, I, and and Chuckie, I I want them to get this stuff too, so hopefully they. Review this, and in two weeks, they get their money.
I think a couple of members like to feel in the cherry over soon.
So your second application was reviewed last night, it was Nicholson Yard, Main Consol, Slips, Client Hardware, and twenty video of help. The committee reviewed the application with a series of questions. Um, there were some that expressed concerns about the applicant being the contract, and whether it was appropriate to pay the grant. Uh, for the applicant's company to do the work, but there was no precedent, and the committee accepted the proposal. There was some discrepancy above the cost of the signage. And responsive sign, there's branded signage that's proposed for the facade of the hardware. And the. Branded signs being given involved, no lock and signs on the bottom, those are paid for by the third party, so those were then removed from the grant. The true value Nicholson's banner at the top of the store, um, are not, so those are included, the. Oil down that the committee recommended, the. Application as presented, less the value of those branded signs. Which gets you to a brand amount of sixty eight seventeen seventy two. Representation of that, because I hear that's any.
So is it more when they're looking at, so I didn't watch the Tiff committees, I'm guessing they're looking at, you know, like. Tractor labor, things that are already there that are technically not a cost of that, they didn't want, so they just didn't. Like submit it or.
Question the phone whether or not it would be a fault, I suppose.
And they deemed it was qualified?
By. About ninety seconds worth of scott when they moved along. They they put it through as request.
Have they had that before? Not approved by them, I'm kind of a. But has anything ever been close enough, you know, otherwise for the labor to play a factor?
I don't know, so the only one, uh, the only one that I could think of where contractor was involved in the profit. Was Quimby Childcase, and it's twenty nine one hundred. And I went back and pulled that file, Matt came, his company was the labor for the wax company, and there was no labor included, because the cost of materials was substantial.
And I I think that's something.
Both the doll, you know, the the total was twenty five thousand, right? Right, so what did they put into that buildings? I don't see that they don't know that.
But it was just materials, not.
Yeah, I mean, that seems.
Kind of, I certainly couldn't charge. That would seem, that would seem a little wrong. Labor's tough.
Yeah.
Labor's tough, it's in-house labor.
I mean, I would say at that, at that price, that's over ninety percent material. For what, for the signs and for the.
Yeah.
As well as the landscaping, another piece of landscaping around the current sign that we have.
Yeah.
Well, there's very, there's, at at this. Grant price, there's. You know, also just.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that I, I I think it's it's tough, uh. It's completely in-house, right? You're actually, you're furnishing your own materials, you're buying your materials off yourself, yes. There's.
All right.
No fault if you're wrong, I don't, don't get me wrong here, but it's one hundred percent and in-house job, are you?
Well, the sign, the sign was, yeah, the four, over four thousand, the big, the large sign, and that'd be, um. The ready rock blocks that we don't buy, we're not a dealer of or anything. Uh, plant, we don't have any plants at our facility, I mean. We have aluminum molds, and you both know, I think we're contributing material from our. Like I said, I mean, I can. Confidently say. Well, I would say at least ninety percent of that is all material, if not more.
Yeah, yeah, so you don't have a whole lot in here for labor.
Then I. I'm just in like a small interest, since it's permanent parts, like the first two are labor and tractor. All of the storefront wall, like that's forty seven hundred, that's all material stuff, and then you've got the one below that. Is four oh five. But, so I mean, like, that's like fifty six hundred, the rest of it is all labor and equipment. Out of ten, so it's missed its path, it's not like ninety percent of that, it's more, unless I'm missing a piece. When I'm looking at it from that, like it, so the excavator truck, compact air, labor truck, like this middle chunk. Is. The actual. Material stuff, the rest of it is.
It'd be thirty four hundred and fifty in labor, yeah.
It's labor in two spots. Yeah, the total's ten seven nine seven. But. About half of labor and trucks and excavators.
So I guess I'm confused, how are you looking at it? I'm saying that the grant would be, what what was the amount? We pick it up sixty eight?
What would recommend of the grant is sixty eight seventeen on a total project of. Or.
It's a ten seven nine seven front door.
Yes, I understand that, uh, that did not, that that was that price over there, it did not include the cost of the signs. On the next page, on that one, the signs, which was the other forty three, and so, right, so of that, they excluded. The third line of fifteen forty four. Those are the branded signs, that the.
Oh, they won't be able to.
You're right, so that's what the committee pulled out last night, or the.
Just the fifteen?
That's correct, it is, right.
So it's the ten seven nine seven and the.
Yeah, three two minus.
Minus.
Fifteen.
Yeah, so not like thousand, so it's eleven. I'll just, that one.
The the project cost for what they approved is thirteen thousand, six thirty five forty five.
And.
And their recommendation was thirteen. So that's something, the project cost the Tiff committee recommends is thirteen, six thirty five forty five.
And they get half.
Maybe half. And they would get half, sixty eight seventeen seventy.
We only have one other instance where, where some of that, I guess, we didn't include parts and labor for it, so I mean, it's kind of hard, because we don't have any parameters for that. But we only have one precedent and doesn't follow that.
Yeah. Uh. They debated it for ninety seconds. Exactly, and I I get it, I. Felt comfortable that we said that the labor was the one they'd questioned, and honestly, I'm not overly concerned about it. We definitely have a full twenty five, you know, I mean. For what there is and what they have invested there, I don't know why you didn't come for the original part, watching. Constructing the building, and you've been eligible for twenty five.
We, uh, yeah, exactly, well, we didn't know that all of a sudden the money would run out, we had other groups of things we wanted to do where the things would get tight, so.
Yeah.
It is. I appreciate you saying that, that, yeah, we, it's that a great deal.
You do, you're nice to me.
A little, yeah, a little.
Yeah. Uh. Is is that? Is that attached to your property or is it separate? Was that carved off and is the?
No, it's needed separate now.
It is, okay, yeah, I was just curious, and you didn't even have to.
Yeah.
You need a move.
Motion to approve the Tiff committee's recommendation.
So, yeah.
Second, yeah, any discussion on that? See none, all is in favor? So everybody? And thank you, guys.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Um. And you don't need to ask some personal down the table, and the other from us, that's the word is. Okay, number nine, discussion action on fire station trim proposal.
It's nasty.
You are not getting.
So I don't see a boat.
You're right, I got it, what?
I'm gonna like, yeah.
No.
That's, you know.
Oh, you gotta see Cisco bear in this right here, folks. Well, I was.
True salesman, yeah.
Must be asked for a lot of money, so that's.
They don't want.
And he's got samples.
So I came with, well, I came with free samples.
Oh, man.
Well, so we.
Not asking, right?
So. You.
Um, okay, uh, I gotta have all the talk during the backstop, I tried to watch one of these meetings online, it's terrible if anybody but one person is talking. So we're gonna kick it over to Todd, who's here to present on the fire station trim. So we'll give Todd your board, and everybody else will be bored.
I need my slide driver.
Nothing's working, we're leaving there. You still, you're supposed to roll right into it, you know?
So we have a problem with our, uh. Trim on fire station, and this problem has been bubbling for eight years-ish or so. Uh, and some key facts, I'll start there, we built the fire station in two thousand fifteen, we'll leave it now, ten years ago. Uh, we moved in in January of sixteen, just a couple of days into the. To the new year, about a million bucks, a little over. Uh, contractor was Blaine Casey, an interesting fun fact, he was the second lowest bidder out of nine. Um. There were a lot of suppliers on the project, but for the trim that we're talking about tonight, the supplier was. We're Butler, now they've since been purchased by another different company, so. Owners, uh, uh, today weren't involved, and the engineer was dear ago engineering that designed the building. And from the contract, uh, which is a document, I I kid you not, it is a full ream of paper. Uh, what was supposed to be on that fire station for trim is a Hardy trim fascia. And molding, I guess that's the official name. Uh, Hardy board trim, that's what was in the contract documents, it's supposed to be there. But there was an approved substitution. According to dear ago. The. Contractor. Uh, requested changing the product. To a product called Alora by a company called Plank M USA. And it was submitted as an equal. Um, they they got permission to proceed somehow. Um, Richard wasn't.
And I don't remember.
I I wasn't involved at that level then, um, none of us have any documentation to that. Uh, but nonetheless, that's what was put on the bill. But of course, in two thousand seventeen, that product was, um, recalled, um, and. Fair years due to cracking and delamination. And so, interesting that they had. A product recall. And then it got worse for them. Um, there was a residential class action lawsuit. Uh, boo, I got. Residential class action lawsuit in twenty twenty, Richard tried to get us in on this. Uh, but I underlined the word residential, we were excluded because it's a commercial building. Right, and then in twenty twenty one, we had Haley Ward review. The fire station. And provided all kinds of pictures, which I can show you if you like, but, um. In in a several page report, I I copied in their conclusions and recommendation. Uh, replacement of the trim pieces with an AZEC, right, which is an all PVC. Product, uh, they suggested that it was thirty one to thirty five thousand, this was in twenty twenty one. Um. Then we had, and I don't remember who was on the board, Pat certainly was, Lindsay might have been, Jim was. We had a consultation with the town attorney in twenty twenty one. And the attorney said, um, it was an executive session, but I'll I'll give a summary of it. Although. Um, the attorney said, you you might win it in court. Uh, you might choose the wrong defendant, because who are you suing? Plankham, who's gone now at this point going to bankruptcy, right?
Who's gonna concentrate on suing them just.
Are you are you suing Weir Butler, are you suing Blaine Casey, are you, who are you suing? So you might choose the wrong defendant, you might spend more money. And then lose, and the cheapest and the safest option with public money is to spend the money and fix the building. And. With her summary ended something like, that's the only thing that provides a guaranteed outcome, you get what?
Right.
Right? Because you could spend the thirty grand or forty grand or either grand and lose, so. Um, that's. So what have we been doing since twenty twenty one? Uh, we have spent somewhere between one and two thousand dollars and patched some some of the really, really bad spots. Uh, well, we've been hoping for the best, but I learned a long time ago that hope is not a strategy, right? So, uh, the problem does continue to to get worse. Um, and and now the problem is cropping up in places that used to look okay. Um, and so, uh, over the winter time, I brought in three contractors to seek competitive bids. Um, so we received some bids, uh, initial bids vary, um. Widely, more widely than the the numbers that you see. Uh, so I issued out a letter of clarification to those three contractors. And asked for a revised bid by five twenty. I did have one contractor that said, no, my my bid is good. Uh, I had one contractor that said, uh, it changed some wording. In, uh, his proposal, but the price he kept the same. Uh, and then I had one contractor that, uh, needed to make some changes to their content and price. Uh, so the final proposals that were issued. Um. By five twenty are the three that you see right there, Nicholson General Contracting, twenty one thousand five hundred, which incidentally is. Right in that range that Haley Ward suggested four years ago. Um. Uh, Main Roof Solutions, another local Noraduck business, forty three thousand, you can see the number. And then, um, we we checked a a much larger, but still somewhat local, um, business that specializes in this and. Their their price was was a little higher than the. So my ask for you would be to. Award the bid to Nicholson at thirty one thousand five hundred and fund it from the Fire Station Capital Reserve account. Which, um, should have about ninety five thousand, it was eighty five thousand from last year's town report, and then. We added ten annual town meetings, so approximately ninety five thousand right now, and that's exactly what that fund is for. Um, it's for that, it's for, uh, a new boiler, it's, uh, for reshingling the roof if it needs it, et cetera. Um, so that's my ask, I did come with some, uh, free samples tonight, and, you know, it isn't hard. Stop in there sometime, Ronnie, and you reach out the window and. Pick your own, pick your own piece if you'd like to take one home for souvenir. Uh, it it means it's, it's just what, it's it's what's happening, it, it's not just Noraduck. It's.
So, I got a house with them, so, yeah.
There's product everywhere, um, and and it's. It's bad, the next slide, I don't think I have the notes, okay, just, uh, I wanted to let you know that. This is, uh, an abbreviated scope of work. So. You put that one? The abbreviated scope of work, when when the prices varied widely, I sent these bullets out to all the contractors and make sure you include this and this and this. Right, I want to make sure that we were getting very competitive prices, and and I am confident that all three of them. Um, meet those bulletted items at this point. Uh, we we are responsible for a dumpster, we'll make a separate request for that.
Yeah, so my question would be, in the original stuff that we got, we got back from, um, the engineers, they specifically mentioned Aztec, so I don't know what any of these.
AZEC.
AZEC, whatever that is, and it looks in the clarification letters, you know, like, when there are such a varied thing, I don't know if. That name brand, it makes it significantly more expensive for someone, because it looks like the first one does not say, they just say a high quality one, this one is specifically using. The name brand that you said and those types of screws, and I'm just wondering if one is following exactly what we asked, and that's why the price is higher, or another one's using something different.
I have. First of all, I think they all priced AZEC, I'm not even sure there is a. I have, first of all, I think they all priced AZEC. I'm not even sure there is a competitive product to them.
Random.
There is.
Yeah, random.
But they all priced.
Prices right there.
They all, they all priced AZEC.
You'll never see it.
It's a full thickness PVC.
I'm looking like in the.
Both products still PVC, Ron.
I understand.
If, if we said something, they weren't pricing that, they could have been pricing a different one.
I said that those bullet points exactly like that. They said, please make sure, and I did leave some wiggle room. If you have a different product that's still, um, a hundred percent PVC, I think I was clear about that.
Yep.
Um, hundred percent PVC matte white, unpainted, smooth surface, for example, AZEC traditional. So, if you got a way to do that at half price. Let's see, if it's the same thing, I, I, I don't wanna get caught in what we got caught in before.
I don't even know how they, again.
It's ten years ago, I wasn't.
Question I have, Todd is.
Sure.
Um, all exterior trim shall be replaced.
Yes.
The first one we're looking at says all building trim that is failing on the fire station will be replaced.
All buildings should be replaced.
Right, but that, that first one?
Uh, yeah.
Both that we have, I, you know what I do for work and you get caught up in the words and if that ever goes to legal.
I specifically asked that contractor, does this include all building trim except for the software? And the answer I received, it right, it was yes.
Uh, they did say that they would, can be revised and maybe changes made by the town. I was just thinking that, oh, trim that is failing, someone legal's going. Is the quote essay for all trim. If they came back and said all trim that's failing, well, this wasn't failing, so we didn't replace it.
Yeah.
I.
I did ask that specific question of that specific contractor and, um, got it.
That would be my only thing.
Yes, it was everything except the software, the software, material isn't, uh, Plankham and it's, isn't failing.
Not to interrupt.
Go ahead.
But since you're here, I just figured it was appropriate to ask, is it just what was rough or is that for everything? On your guys' bid, are you part of that bid?
Absolutely.
Okay, does that include every, is that all? Okay, so just for clarification with.
I didn't think it's inappropriate since you're here.
The intent of the sentence was describing the condition of it, not trying to limit the. I, I did ask later on, I got clarifications, everything except the.
The software.
I'm good.
I did, I did include some pictures, I mean, big chunks, you, you got something bagged, so we can say that. Some of what you're seeing here has been patched. Uh, the next picture, I think the third picture or slide in shows some really close right there. I mean, that, that used to be, uh, uh, a full five-quarter thickness, a full, full one-inch by six-inch board or whatever, look at it. That was within.
Contractor puts on your house, go sue him.
Probably went down the bonding, I mean, they, cause they were bonded to build that, to probably legal business, I already been down that road.
We exhausted those options.
And maybe. Good. Absolutely, and, and for a while, you know, way in the beginning, it looked like, uh, Blaine Casey was gonna do something and, and and he said he would, but it didn't, nothing ever ended up happening.
Most of them bonding with it.
All paid.
Yeah.
They might say they are.
So we could go, so we could go chasing it for the manufacturer or the vendor. Legal recognition was.
Yeah, sure.
It's the only way you know you're done when you're done. So.
Good, wow, with that, are you guys comfortable?
Actually, it feels tense.
Okay, so there's a motion, a second, any further discussion? See none, all those in favor? It's everybody. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can keep the samples.
Is that?
Basically.
It really is.
I bring you more if you're gonna run out. They wanna give them to friends.
Okay, moving forward, uh, number ten here, update on airport advisory committee meeting.
I, I do watch some of that. At the last meeting of the airport advisory committee, which we now are holding here, so we're ready to stream online, um, they just moved.
Yeah.
Um, we, they went through a series of things largely focused around revenue generated for the airport. They heard, I think, some of the discussions of the last meeting, um, and wanted to make sure that they were responsive to that, so. I'm gonna try to run down through this right quick, and that is, uh, what, they talked about, so solar development, why can't we develop solar at the airport? Um, there is a former, um, representative from the statehouse that was, uh, a key part of PVC regulations related to solar, he's working his angle, then we have a, a, an attorney on that has a, uh, calling that versatile. And they're gonna advise them, uh, as to how maybe the airport had a path forward. The issue that we have is a point of intersection to three-phase power, um, and the fact that we're in a Madison Electric territory which serves by central main power, and then you have the obstacles of how do you actually get to the, uh, three things, where they had to purchase easements so you could get your way down the four and a half miles to Route Two. Uh, but they are working on that, but it's not a reasonable thing, um, as you might think. Uh, their financial reporting, they talked about that briefly, but we're gonna work to, uh, restructure that and pivot the uh, airport fringes over to the town software that we use for proper, um, so that it's a streamlined transactions and more consistently pointing across everything that we see. The airport has a stand-out issue there, um, we use that for the town and sewer hall, right? We talked about obstruction and easement, so the FAA, when flying approach, identified a tree that they declared to be obstruction, so for the last two or three years, they have not been able to, um, safely and with coverage of their shirts, fly in at night uh, from a, a certain approach. And so they pinged that tree, they gave you the lat launch, and we have to remove it. So we thought it was the one that we had navigation easement over, uh, which means we go out there and just cut the tree and determine whether or not to land one or one sit or doesn't, um. Anyway, we flagged the tree, the landlord said, no, 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 you have three or four hundred feet outside that easement. So we're trying to determine, is it three or four hundred feet outside that easement, and if it is, then why the FAA, um, like, market is obstruction. And if it is a legitimate obstruction outside of our current easement, then they're gonna have to support us going to acquire an easement over that property. It gets very complicated, so, um, anyway, we're working on that, we're gonna leverage our relationship with Gale, which is the airport, so and help us overlay this and that, um, and then move forward. Then we had a pretty hearty discussion, I'm gonna skip over and come back. The new and different events, we talked about that briefly, um, with the carting challenge. But there's another jamboree, which would bring in large aircraft from Owl's Head Transportation Museum in, in combination with antique race cars, um, and that's something that they would be looking at possibly this fall. That'd be mid to late September if that came, but that is very early on, if, if that's gonna go anywhere. Then the, uh, final discussion we're gonna talk about is, is what they talked about in Moore, you might remember seven years ago, eight years ago, we bought a wide area of Moore, you know, a second-hand, if anything, fell into our lap, we wanted a wreck, that's like twelve-foot mowlet, it's got a big mower front and it's got two huge decks that come down on both sides. Um, we fell into that for thirteen thousand, and it's done as well, but it's now got problems and it's end of life. And pretty much, we've had three different people look at it and everybody says, it's not gonna be easy to fix it, if you fix it, you're only going to continue to go back.
I don't wanna flip the page, I know it's on there.
Yeah, it's clear, yes, it's clear.
I mean, like, with their, I mean, I know that Todd does extra, but like, we always see like what they're expecting to have to, have for expenditure, and so they know what they need to be in the reserve account, if they even factored that in, or is this like a new, oh, this money?
I mean, quite honestly, the, the airport has just always spent what they needed to spend in order to remain. That's how they have accrued the debt to the town that they have. Same as the sewer department. Sewer department, well, three years without setting rates, looking at expenses and other things.
So, no, they've not, like.
Alright, but the town has consistently put away ten thousand dollars a year to reserve a channel for the airport that has never been touched. So, we're at a kind of a point now where we can just say, hey, airport, go buy this, and by the way, the town's gonna pay for it.
Can the town use that for anything else, or does it have to solely remain the use of the airport?
No, it would remain the town purchases, it's the town.
Do we have any use for something? Like, so if it gets like that gigantic, does that negate its ability to do anything else that the town might need other fields? Or like, we get something that's more multi-use, like, it might take a little bit longer to mow the airport, but it's become more multi-use and.
Oh, with the new one?
The new one's gonna take more time to mow, it's, it's smaller.
Right, um. Yes, for the ones a year that public works needs it, they could borrow it, but we've got out of the business of all of it.
There's gonna be. Right, if it stays at the airport, it might stay nice, cause I mean, it, it's really, there's no crazy obstacles that could come down here, at any bottom moment, neither can.
We go more rapidly.
Yeah, it more actively still.
And then we mow the old landfill.
Yeah.
I think that, what's the price here?
Who does the mowing with the new mower?
Bruce. Will be employed at the.
Okay, okay, yeah.
So, they also took the old, uh, probably fifteen-year-old city turn uh, that belonged to the summer group, back in the day of summer groups, our cemetery crew, this was the old cemetery along the way. And they've worked their way through that, and that is, uh, um, so anyway, we, I had gone out and got pricing on a sixty-inch mower, and then they said, look, can we look at a seventy-two-inch mower, um, and see what the cost difference is? It's the same price, if not less. Um, so, we got the pricing here. The airport advisory committee said, if we can get the information together, let's look at it, and then they wanted to vote by email. Majority of their committee has asked, um, for you to authorize the purchase from parties. They believe that the value of a local purchase, there's value in that.
And the brand, the brand, I know that, that's what we use on our company, and that's what John is on for, I think, so. For reliable, I mean, not to say that the other two brands aren't, but I know that you don't.
Uh, Johnny, he depicts your returns, yes, definitely not.
Yeah, so I guess that I will move to approve the bid for parties motorsports out of Noradlock for the graveyard. And the amount, is it actually the fourteen or the fifteen?
It's the fifteen.
Okay, what's the fourteen, is that just the low?
Fourteen is that five percent.
Oh, okay, I was, I, yeah, I will move or something.
Okay, so I would, I will move that we use the airport's current reserve account to fund the up to the fifteen thousand one hundred and twelve dollars and twenty cents, and let's make sure for Chucky, there's no shipping cost for us there.
Uh, so there's a motion.
I was second.
Second, uh, any discussion? See none, all those in favor? That's everybody. Excellent.
Number eleven here, starting action on futures sewer commitment process.
So, every second meeting or not, we commence sewer rates. Uh, take one before I go out here. The state said you don't need to commence sewer rates anymore.
Okay, good.
So, but we've been doing it.
What?
We've been doing it, well, so that's what's here for you. Um, we've been doing it for the last nine and a half years. And, you know, I generally, the piece of paper that you sign, and you all feel good about it, and next, or it's an extra motion, I mean. If you wanna continue that, you can do that, and if you don't, then I would ask that you move to not do that.
You want a motion?
Motion to keep it as is?
No.
Not order to change it to the new way?
Yeah, we don't, we don't want.
Right.
Many contractors are kept up to speed and.
If there's a problem, I'm guessing you're gonna say something.
So, we move to.
Well, ultimately, it's the sort of responsibility.
Oh, right, it'll, it'll, just checks and balances below us, so I, I don't need to sign that piece of paper every two weeks, we don't, I'm thinking.
So the move is to?
Discontinue your practice.
Alright.
Motion, second, uh, any further discussion? It's nice to see something is streamlined, that, that's definitely, yeah, right, all those in favor?
So it's the hardest one to find, not to.
Uh, discussion action on, you know, the B. Uh, Juneteenth, last year, you remember that holiday flexed, um, it was met with mixed reviews, and I think largely and not the incentive, I think, of the law, the negative feedback that we received about the closure was the holiday itself and not the day ownership was observed. The holiday appears on Thursday, uh, staff would like to work Thursday until Friday.
I move that we follow the steps, um, desired for that.
You didn't push a motion?
Yes, please.
That was it, so moved, yep.
So, any discussion? See none, all in favor? It's everybody.
That, because that is a modification to the.
Yes, right, that is.
Uh, other business, do you have anything for other business?
Need to add this claim to the other business?
What, roadside mow, is that new tractor, do that?
It's going to, yeah, when it comes back from the shop, it's gonna have the arm on it, they're gonna come down and carry it on it.
How they have a good idea.
Yeah, uh, that would be the next, adding discussion action on release of tax.
Some more.
Second.
There we go.
I need a session.
In on, just a little.
All those in favor?
Time to hear that, kid, with all the.
That was good. Alright, seriously, alright, no talking.
Now, this is a property that's been off the tax rolls for the last two years, I believe, and this was gonna be the third. Um, it is on the tax rolls, it was listed in the January April firm, this is back taxes, this is all missed taxes. This is all fees associated, paid curbing, and that's a motion to sign with them, they released the town's interest in Sixty-Nine Oak Hill land only, not twenty-one, not twenty-two, Jesse Shrewd Valley.
Don't move.
Second, motion a second, uh, any discussion? See none, all those in favor? It's everybody.
We have any other questions?
Hi, yeah, we're, um, if we can ask for discussion action, are we rolling able to be agenda?
So.
Motion.
Second, second discussion, done, all those in favor?
Chucky. Chucky's on board, he's.
Everybody, this is the former one-sixty water road, the driveway with Jamesy Precky equipment. He drives, he drives one of the roads, and the left is Jamesy Precky equipment, and there's a right, this will hold.
Oh, right, okay.
They will require nine-one-one address, we've received three names in order, are Sharvyn, C-H-A-R-V-Y-N, Westway.
But that's all one word?
Sharvyn.
Westway?
Oh, web.
They're too, they're a blend of children's names.
Oh.
Sharvyn, Westway.
Is there another option?
That's one. Two is Lola Drive.
Lola, what they?
Three is Lambert Drive.
How about Lambert Drive?
Yeah, that sounded.
Nothing to place with that.
But, their first choice, why wouldn't we just come up?
Sharvyn, Westway, that's who, who's asking for it?
The property.
What the hell?
It's there for nine-on-one, that'll get a little sloppy. And that's always bad.
Doesn't matter enough to matter to you guys.
We, I have a question on.
We'll get to it.
We, we did, we, you guys did that for our request, and it's still not officially on nine-one-one of this cap, and even still have a hard time requesting anything official for that, it's been since, I think, last fall.
You, did you guys owe us options or, did you give us options on both names or?
Yes.
Did we pick your first one?
I don't know.
You picked the one you wanted. Instead of pick, um, so I do not.
I wanna go with what we want.
I do not send you a letter and I do not put up a sign until that is in the nine-one-one system. Dispatch has that address.
Okay.
UPS, GPS, those people won't have it for years.
Okay, I, I just wondered how that worked, because, you know, they're still struggling with that.
He's right, he's right, we shouldn't pay for it.
Just tell them when it, they'll get, make no difference now.
Right.
Or.
Sharvyn, Westway.
Motion.
Motion.
Second, somebody, there's motion a second, uh, any discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Can we charge them by the letter of the firm?
But I'm very significant.
Development of a new residential.
Yes, is that, is that gonna go, is that going through or no?
Yes.
Well, that's okay.
I believe so.
So, would it back right through or, okay, two cents?
Yep.
Curious, uh, does the board have anything else? Does the public have anything else? Just made sure, I don't wanna cut anybody off.
Just more of a.
Nothing else to do, I'm saying, okay, I'm glad.
Well, you, back, I, I had things I could.
Are you involved to a grand?
Everybody.
Yes, still. I really was a question, you know, what are your?